This is the twenty. What's that?
Hi.
Um, this is the twenty acre parcel that's in question in the darker green. The overall parcel is our entire property, which is a hundred and thirty-two acres total. We have already developed fifty-three lots. And that's in this three phases over here and this phase down here. You probably know that there's a, there's an, uh, a project that's built on this. We sold this property. Um, and the multifamily condominium type development that's on there was, that was not our development. That was just property that we had sold. So that kind of gives you a shot of the whole property. This is, uh, phase four A, four B, and phase five. These three phases have been approved for single-family lots. And we're ready to develop them. It's just that Bill had spoken. The cost of infrastructure, the cost of land, the cost of labor, the cost of everything is just. It's at an all-time high, right? And what it's doing is it's forcing, uh, the price of construction and the price of properties that are purchased by individuals up. So we were looking for a, a concept to develop a little higher density and get some apartments, uh, developed in, uh, Northtown. And so the concept after the PUD option became available from the city, we started researching, how could we implement a plan unit development within the structure of the development that we already had planned? So you can see, this is all part of our master plan development and has been since two thousand and sixteen. So all of this development that's currently shown on the outside is sort of what we originally proposed, um, and what, w- we won't say the city approved it, but they sort of approved our master plan conceptually. So we have been working forward on that master plan. And it's just gonna take time. It takes years and years to develop property. Um, as we're, as we looked at it, we also had a little road coming up here and a bunch of single-family lots along that road. Once we, uh, once we started looking at that, we figured we could turn this into a PUD development. As Jennifer mentioned, the density is really not increasing from what it was before. It's just being forced down into a smaller package, if that makes sense. Um, so that's. Yeah, we can, we can get off, go ahead and do these full screen. Cause it's probably easier to point and look at these.
Okay, tell me where to go.
You get just a little better view of the overall project here. Um, but again, as you're looking at that sheet, there's the twenty acres within, that's our proposal. These are lots that are already developed. These lots here are lots that are approved, but have not been constructed yet. So it makes sense. Everybody got a good overall picture? Okay, let's jump to the next slide.
Are we starting with one or are we starting with four?
You could start with one, you could start with four, you can.
Just, I would just ask if you're pointing to stuff, I'm trying to see you so I could.
Yeah, this, this is all good. You can start with this. Um, so this is just, this is the package, uh, that was submitted to the city to kind of show what we're proposing for the development. So if you look at this, at this top shot, this is a view of the development with the buildings structured in there. And you can kind of see a little bit of, of what you see outside in Livingston from this particular site. So what we did is we just, we modeled all of these buildings kind of into the landscape to give you guys an idea of what the buildings look like looking in and also what the buildings look like if you were onsite looking out. Um, can you pop to one of the site plans, Jennifer?
Sure. This one or this one?
Yeah, that one's fine, right there. Um, you can see what we're doing here. We have three buildings that are thirty-six unit buildings. And then the remainder of our buildings are twenty-four unit buildings. This building right here is the building that has commercial, okay? So the main level of this building is all commercial. And what we've done is we put that building down here at the entry and we've made a, a road system around it to just make it more convenient for day trips if somebody pulled in there, wanted a, a cup of coffee or put a gym in there or something like that. We want this to be very convenient for people to get in and get back out, right? So the concept was to place this building and put the commercial close to scenic to give an opportunity for people to utilize, uh, that commercial development. And then hopefully from the city's perspective and ours to reduce a few of the trips that are going across the track uh, and, and keep a little bit of that commercial development up on the north side. We, we're big advocates of that, guys, but we think it's gonna take some time, right? Um, you don't just build a commercial space and then all of a sudden somebody fills it up and you're selling coffee. We need to have people up here in order to have a population to sell coffee to. So part of that is this development is kind of increasing the density of the area to give the commercial, along with all the rest of these lots and all the other developments up there, an opportunity, uh, to be successful. Okay, um, can you jump to? Let's jump to, uh, uh, let's jump to this plan.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. So this just shows, uh, we're color coding these now and that, that relates to the graph that's up in the top. We have copies of all this stuff. If you guys want a copy of the, of the PDF for the submission, we have it and we're, we're more than happy to send it to you.
Um, it's also online.
And it's online and we posted it online. Um, and so if, if you wanna, if you want a copy of it, it's available for you. Now, I would say that Jennifer kind of touched on this, this, this work session concept. We took a little bit different look at the work session concept and we said, well, we've gotta provide something, we've gotta design something, we've gotta give you guys something to comment on. So we did. We designed some buildings. But I want everybody to know that it's just a concept, right? We're just starting out with a, hey, here's what something could look like. It doesn't have to look exactly like that. And part of the reason we're here tonight is to see what the community has to say about it, right? Um, what do you think of the buildings? What do you think of the design? What do you think of the amenities that we're providing? Um, and what are some of your other concerns that we can maybe address as we go through this design process, right? Um, we don't, we don't wanna come in here and drop buildings down and say, well, that's, that's all. Like Jennifer said, most people are putting those buildings down and then you guys are not having an opportunity to make comments and be kind of proactive in the design process. And we'd like to change that up a little bit and give you guys the opportunity to say, hey, these are the things that we think should be implemented. And once we hear that information, then we're gonna do our dead level best to implement the comments that come from the committee or come from the community and from the committee. Okay, uh, let's jump to the, uh, uh, views of the.
Up here again.
Yeah, go right, right here.
How, how far is it?
Go ahead and zoom out to full screen there so you can see the whole building. Okay, so this is just a concept in space of what one of these buildings might look like. Uh, this particular building is a thirty-six unit, uh, residential building. What we've tried to do is we've tried to break down the facades a little bit. So this doesn't look like one giant building with windows populating the sidewalks. Um, trying to do some decks and some overhangs and some, some open space for some of the tenants. Um, and, and just trying to get a little bit of a feel, uh, in the architecture that's not the same as everything that's being developed. But once again, guys, these are just quick ideas and concepts on buildings. Um, we, we really had to design something. So this was our first concept and we'd love to hear what the community thinks about it. If you're like, well, I don't like these wings going up there, great, that's super good information for us. Because we're not sold on anything until you guys are sold on it, right? We wanna, we wanna really reach out to the community and say, what do we wanna see up there? And, and what is right for Livingston, right? Um, okay, Jennifer, jump to the plan page. Be just your next one and your. So this is that thirty-six unit building. You can kind of see what we're doing in terms of the units inside. We, our, our mix on these two hundred and forty units is, uh, we have one hundred and twenty studios. Uh, we have. Help me out, Garrett, what's my? Oh boy. One twenty in the studio. I got it on another page, I just don't have it anymore.
I think you have it right at the top of one of these pages.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah. Right?
Okay, so we have a, we have a total of, uh, one hundred and forty. Uh, no, no, no.
Right there, right?
Yeah. Okay, so we have, uh, total of seventy-two studios. No, that's, that's wrong.
It's all of these.
That, that's total. It's one, it's, I believe that's one twenty and then the other is half and half. So we, but we're going with small units here, guys. That's the, that's the big play. We're doing two-bedroom, we're doing one-bedroom, and we're doing studio. Um, so you can see a two-bedroom unit, basically just a two-bedroom efficiency, but we've got about eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet. A one-bedroom is just what a one-bedroom is. One-bedroom basically has this similar layout to the two-bedroom unit. But that comes in at about seven hundred and fifty square feet. And then our other type is a studio unit that comes in at about five hundred and sixty-two square feet. Did I move that?
No, I did that when I joined.
Um, comes in at about five hundred and sixty-two square feet. The concept here is that we'll get a little more efficient, uh, living space for individuals and we'll, we'll be able to bring the price down. Not only for construction, but also for cost of rental, obviously less square foot, uh, less money per rental. So that's our general concept in these buildings. You can see we have basically both buildings, thirty-six unit and the twenty-four. A central corridor with units off of both sides and two exit areas, um, on each one of the buildings. So there's kind of two exits at the end, uh, units, units in the middle, and then units on the end again. These buildings are three stories high, just under forty feet tall. Um, and we've got two hundred and forty total units on the twenty acres. Let's jump to the twenty-four unit building.
The next.
But you can see that twenty-four unit building is just a little bit smaller, a few less buildings in it, uh, or a few less, less units in it. And the reason that was done that way, you can see on the site plan how we're kind of following contours as we start to climb the hill. As the slope gets steeper, we rotated the buildings. Part of that gives us kind of a unique view on the site of the buildings, which we kind of like the different play of the buildings. But this also allows us to get the buildings graded into the site. So more of these buildings as you go up the hill are just shorter and they have a condensed amount of units in them. So all of the buildings that you see up there are red, twenty-four unit, uh, twenty-four unit buildings and all the buildings down here would be thirty-six units, except this one, which has the twelve lower floor, floor units removed in favor of commercial. Okay, so take me back to the, uh, uh, first page. If you can just zoom in on these, Jennifer, to give kind of an idea of what things are looking like. So this is just a view looking out at the development. You can see some mountain in the background, some other development here.
I like the light from God coming down.
Just give you kind of a sense of what we're looking at here. Now onto the next one. And this is, this is looking up the new road to the north. You just kind of see how the buildings scale against us. Uh, this is, this is up in the middle of the site. Kind of looking onto a residential building. You can see our property climbing to the back from there. So this is sort of the last of the units on that site plan.
At the top?
Yeah, at the back. Um, this is taken from down below. This is in that, uh, this is in that commercial building. So if you're in the commercial building on a second floor, standing on that deck, that's that little pull-through that we show. Um, and then that's the road heading back up into the development. And you can really see here, guys, that the topography gets really strong. This, these buildings are almost built in a little, in a little drainage area. Um, what's nice about that is it kind of shields the buildings from outside of the site. Um, it makes it a little more difficult to sense the scale of it.
Matt, I think that somebody back there had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Did you add elevations in your schematic?
Did we add?
Did you, are you projecting it real? Cause on, on the, on the site plan, there's a lot of corners. So I'm wondering if that's replicated and accurately.
It's, it's replicated the best we can in terms of the software that we're using. Um, it's just a little tricky to get it perfect. And then what we're doing is we're, we're supplementing that with background information to try to allow you to see kind of what you see outside of the building. Um, it's just difficult to get it all scaled perfectly. So it is, it is a replication, an artist's replication.
Uh, what are you gonna do about the power lines that go to the middle of the property?
They, they still remain. If, go back to the site plan real quick or I'll, I'll just show you on this one. Um, this is the power line right now.
Matt, I'm sorry, I have to be able to show people at home and since I already seen it too now. What, where's the power line?
Where do I hold it?
No, just.
You need to see it?
I need to show the people at home, so.
Okay, well, I'll just show them up on the, go back to the site plan.
This one?
That's fine.
See, we're right there.
Power line's right here, correct?
Yeah.
Through the middle.
So there is a, there's a, a fifty-foot easement on that power line. So that power line is at the backside of our lots in, in phase four A. And it's also at the backside of the parking lots for these buildings. But it's probably a hundred feet away from the backside of this building. Once you get done with all the setbacks. And the building setbacks, of course. Any other questions? Okay, I'll, I'll wrap up, uh, mine and then just open it up for, uh, Garrett to speak a little bit about the infrastructure. Um, but essentially we're, what Jennifer said, we've taken these twenty acres. We've condensed it down to two hundred and forty units, which is really the underlying zoning. We've left all of this other space open. Uh, we've provided commercial amenities. Uh, we've kept the heights restricted to under forty feet. Um, we're planning to do some bus stop stuff to try to really promote this traffic integration. Um, but, uh, from there, um, I'll answer any questions you guys might have.
Where's your park?
Say that again?
Where's your park?
Oh. It's right here.
Right here? Right where? And how many acres is that?
We don't have this specifically identified right now.
That's, that's a steep hillside, right? It's a steep hillside?
Uh, it won't be when it's done. Um, this will be flat. And Garrett can kind of explain some of that. You know, you can see, if you guys are looking at the contours, you really understand grading. You can see how we're bringing a road through to here. We have to cut through the middle of the hill to make that road work. And in order to do that, we have to level this area up here. So yeah, that was a, that was one of the things that we were working on is trying to make sure we had some parkland that didn't have, you know, such increased grade to it. But interestingly, we do have some trail systems going out that cover some of the higher ground in our development. Um, and you know, walking along those ridge tops is really great views out and you don't really notice the houses down below. You get to see outside of the development. Um, so we really like our trail system and we plan to integrate this development with our overall trail system. There are, oh, here it goes.
About three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty?
Could you guys repeat that for the people at home to hear how many units?
How parking spaces? Yes, how many parking spaces? Uh, the answer is approximately three hundred and fifty. The, the city's requirement is one point five per unit. Um, and so that was our absolute minimum. But when we're introducing commercial into the game, we're just worried that, you know, you start getting people parking there for commercial, then you don't have places for your residents to park.
You said you think you're gonna integrate this development in your overall trail system. Can you share your trails and plan with us?
Do you, do you have a big, uh? No, we don't. I can tell you that, um, zoom back out to the whole thing. Yeah, good idea.
I was actually gonna ask if you could provide that.
Sure.
Between now and, yeah.
So, uh, with, uh, phases four A, four B, and five, which is above that, we have in, uh, required, the city's required us to put a trail in there. So there'll be three thousand foot trail. And we will also back that off to the rest of the development. Um, where the first couple of phases are.
Right here.
So that's all part of this phase here, these phases here. So the trail system will be here. It'll cut, some of it'll be on sidewalks. It'll cut across. It'll come down through here, so there's access. Uh, we haven't fully designed it yet. That's, was, was that a question?
Yeah, I have a question about the trail system.
Yeah.
So if you're pushing people onto the sidewalks off of the open space, I'm thinking like, all right, little kids, like you're gonna have like kids on bikes on sidewalks.
Most of the trail system's not on sidewalks. It's just where it's necessary to cross.
Are, are you guys gonna like connect the open spaces with like easements? Like trail corridors between the houses? Or are you gonna push people like up and around and through the system?
Well, as I said, it hasn't been fully designed yet, but but we will minimize use of the sidewalks for sure.
Okay. Since you're trying to mitigate and minimize road driving to these commercial spaces, it seems like a nice incorporating active transportation that minimizes putting people adjacent to streets and traffic would be ideal, especially when you look at more large-scale land.
Yeah.
Five-acre reservoir park. I have, like, if people don't, and or people up in the adjacent areas, maybe there's like a connected system at some point would be, right?
Yeah, we, I've worked with the trail committee here in the past. So I've, I have their input as well. It'll, the only time we have sidewalks would be in crossings where they're necessary.
Sure, there's definitely some open here.
The sid, the sidewalks too, guys, are required by the city. So there's not really a lot we can do about them.
No, definitely not saying you don't do sidewalks. Agree with sidewalks.
But I think, I think the sidewalks along scenic trail that we put in four or five years ago, we see a tremendous amount of traffic on those sidewalks up there. Um, so I think getting people on the sidewalks and getting people into the trail system, that's all part of the equation, right? We're gonna come probably off the, off the asphalt, onto a sidewalk and then to the trail.
Right.
Matt, Billy, yeah, this, and then we also have a question online. So the plan unit, the PUD document that lists, you know, all of the, uh, formulas for incentives, it says increased open space. Are you, is there a numeric gap, you know, for a twenty acre parcel, you have to have one acre, two acres, or is it just vague like?
You have to have twenty, you have to have twenty percent open space.
At least.
Yeah, and we're, we're way over that.
You're over fifty percent. You're about sixty-four percent.
So parklands and the park space that they're showing, that's, that's one part of the open space. The undeveloped, the untouched area that they're not going to disturb further up the slope, that is also considered open space in the way that we do the formula. So I'm not sure if that's what you, yeah.
Does that answer your question? Sort of. Sixty-four percent, you said?
It's not a number, it's a percentage. Um, I believe, um, Erica, do you wanna come off mute? I know you have a question.
Yeah, thanks for letting me zoom in here. Um, these are gonna burn.
You are.
You're on mute?
You're on mute.
Um, am I back?
Yeah.
I somehow pushed a really weird filter and there's like puppies and dogs and things. So if my face turns into a cat, my apologies. Um, so yeah, um, thanks so much for hosting this. Um, I just wanted to make a quick or ask a quick question. Um, you know, you, you have some great experts in the room, like Lulu from GVLT, Sarah Stans with um, PCEC and some, some great folks on, that used to be on the Parks and Trails Committee. The city no longer has a Parks and Trails Committee. Um, so if there would be an option to, um, as the design gets finalized, to, to provide some comments on that. And so we could see how that trail system is incorporated, not only into the site plan designs, but how it incorporates with the overall trails and active transportation plan. That would be fabulous.
Yeah, I think we could do that.
Is there anyone else online? I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, Jennifer, I've got a few questions when the time is right.
Okay, Forrest, do you wanna go and then we'll come back to the room? Is that? Go ahead.
Absolutely. Um, a- again, Matt, thanks for the presentation. I think I caught all of the metrics. I was trying to take notes quickly as, as you were running through them. Did you say that your maximum, um, your maximum kind of, uh, green space or open space, um, is over fifty percent? In other words, your pervious materials don't exceed fifty percent?
Yeah, uh, we're saying that the open space is about sixty-four percent. And that's our engineer, so I don't know if you wanna believe it or not.
Uh, Jennifer, out of curiosity, what is from Livingston's standards for this type and zoning? What is our, um, maximum?
I think it's eleven percent.
For subdivision, zoning does not regulate, um, open space. So if, if you were to develop this, if you were to subdivide this into lots as you did for phase four A, the other ones, um, the minimum requirement for that is eleven percent. So for, to get an incentive, developer incentive for the PUD process, your minimum, um, whether you wanna subdivide it or not, is twenty percent. And I believe, I, I can check the number, but I know you've exceeded that. And again, Forrest, I'm not sure if you heard us earlier, but there's, there's a park space designated. That is gonna be more of a, an active use park space, I think.
Right.
All of this out here, this green, that's not going to be developed, anything that's undisturbed, counts towards the open space requirement. And that's consistent with our subdivision regulations as well.
Okay, good. That was, that was one of the clarifications. I, I, I thought that that was what I heard, so that's great. The other piece is what we're looking at right now as far as the roadways, uh, the parking lots and then, uh, then the nine pads, I'm gonna call them. Is this the entirety of what would be proposed or is this the first phase of maybe two?
It, it's the entirety. These are all the buildings and these would be constructed in phases as well. So you're probably gonna see building one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, uh, as we work our way up the hill.
Okay, okay. So the intent is not to build, say, half of it and then let it sit for ten years and then build the other half. It would be all kind of a consistent construction where all the trades would just work their way up the hill.
Yeah, and, and the goal, our, our goal right now would be to start with building two. Um, and then probably building three and then building one and then jump to the buildings up the hill. And that's again, just as we were talking before, it's to get the residential densities up so the commercial makes sense.
Right.
And then from there on, it would just be a more logical, more up there, up the hill.
Okay, and then thank you for that, Matt. And then Jennifer, from a, from a maximum unit count per acreage, I think we have twenty acres here, right? Are, how close to the max are, is this proposal showing?
We actually did the math on this, um, before they came in and two forty units, I believe, is, is the number which you're proposing. We actually did the math on this, um, before they came in, and two forty units, I believe, is, is the number, which you're proposing. So they are exactly at the max that would be allowed if they spread this development out over those twenty acres. And however they wanted to do it, whether they wanted to put them all in multifamily, if they wanted to do individual lots, as they had done in the other phases of North Town, um, like that one that you see on Wild Ride immediately to the, the west. Um, tha- that's how that flat was. It's the same thing, they're just condensing all those, if you, if you want to call it, they're taking all those single lots. And instead of everybody having their own lot, these are going to be rentals, correct, and they're, they're in multifamily buildings.
I think that number's actually two hundred and forty-eight, because you're one per thirty-five hundred square feet, right? So we're, we're actually just under the, the max density.
Okay. Thank you for your correction.
They're very close, I believe, for your calculation.
I did want to just bring this up, and I'm sorry, because I, I want to let it, but I'm looking at something I think you have there, which is your phasing. And just to be clear with folks, this, you will, the way you have proposed this, so if it is, if it is approved as you proposed it, um, buildings one, two, and three, right here at the bottom, those are all part of phase one. So those three have to be completed first before the way that you've proposed it.
That's what we talked about, but we talked about buildings could be constructed in series, you don't have to build all three buildings.
You know, no, correct, but I'm saying, rather than going up
No, absolutely, and that, that is, that is absolutely our plan.
Yeah, one phase has to be completed before the second phase.
Exactly, and so, yeah, and it's, it's, so phase one is the first three, one, two, and three. Phase two, for those at home that weren't seeing earlier, when you were pointing, uh, four, five, and six, buildings four, fives, and six are considered part of phase two. And then phase three is building seven, eight, and nine.
Yep. That's
Okay, that's very helpful, I appreciate that, Jennifer.
Yeah, the trail system, uh, I live in North Town now, and, uh, uh, there have been promises of, of trail, and really nothing's been done, but the residents have sort of made their own trail. And I think you guys have a really look at those trails to fit in to, to your overall system. Also, in the design of, uh, uh, on Sweetgrass, there's no easements in order to get, um, to, um, the trails. I mean, I go out in my backyard and, and get to the ridge, but, um, uh, a- and if you look at what's on there now.
You're, you're talking about easements to come through a lot to get to a trail system?
And, and if you look at, uh, your picture with, uh, Sweetgrass going around in, into, uh, you know, that circle, you, you're gonna have a, a trail, or there is a trail in the middle of, uh, that open space. Uh, but unless you have some kind of, uh, uh, entrance and egress, uh, you can't, you know, to that end.
So we do have a, we do have an access to the trail system there.
Okay.
And we have another access to the trail system up here. Um, these, this is access to the, uh, we actually just put this in, um, and, and changed our development a little bit. So everybody from over here could get to over here and to the rest of the development as well. So a little bit of that work is kind of ongoing, um, but I would definitely go over to North Town, and we can take a look at where the trails are developing, just by natural, um, and see how those could maybe work into our overall trail plan.
Yeah, they, they go up now, um, to the open space above your property. And also there's one from, uh, the top of the ridge, um, the second ridge, uh, that goes really up to the, uh, water tower.
I don't know about that one. Well, uh, you've been over, you've been over on it, walking through there, but, um. I think the best answer, honestly, is we haven't fully developed the trail plan yet, but we're required to do that by the city as part of our approval.
And we will, we will look at to make sure that it is consistent with the Trails and Active Transportation Plan. I believe that was adopted in twenty twenty-one, I know it was before I was here.
Sounds about right.
And then there also, anything about trails that was, that's brought up during the recreation, um, master plan or the plan process that just, uh, is wrapping up, we'll look at all that and then see what you're also
Can you just zoom this back down to one page real quick, Jennifer? So in a note, we do, we do have, this is all just future development, that's master plan. But if there's, if there's, you know, predetermined trails up here, some of this stuff can be redesigned to accommodate them, because it's not, it's not locked, locked in. Um.
I believe
Yeah, there's another easement that comes off of this, that gets into this open space. Um, so we're working on it, but it's not perfect.
Oh, okay. Uh, I have two questions. My, my first question is, if you get all of the permits and greenlit, would we even break around?
Uh, probably this summer or fall, if it all happened, but, you know, we just, we don't know if that's actually going to come to fruition.
And then my second question is, so you're the developer, who, are you also going to be the building manager? Are you going to be?
I won't be building it myself, but yeah, we will be managing the development, I think.
Yeah, no, managing the rental of it.
We'll be managing everything, the building of it, the rental of it, everything.
And will there be affordable housing?
Well, as affordable as we can make it, given
So no, you're not, you're not
We're not going for the affordable housing option, no. And, and Jennifer stated that upfront, I want to make sure everybody knows, we're not looking at deed restrictions or any of that kind of thing, um. To be very honest, it's super complicated. Um, and, and our feeling is, uh, we can develop these units, we can develop them at a, at a low price point that we can make affordable housing, right? Um, it's, is it perfect? No, um, it's, we're all dealing with the same thing, right? I mean, the construction prices are up, we, we talked about it when we started. I mean, the cost of infrastructure right now, so to go in there on four A, four B, and five, and put the infrastructure in, the cost per lot is more than we sold lots for and paid for, just to put the stuff in the ground. So then, where does the developer get a profit, right? Like, so we have to say, well, now the lots are hundred and twenty-five thousand, hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and people go, I can buy a lot and, and build a house, and it's gonna be five hundred thousand dollars. And that's really what started us down this, let's take another look at this density and see if we can somehow get more units on less property built for a, a better price, and then make that a little more affordable.
But you will be able to get market range rentals.
You, you
Buy, buy
Absolutely, yeah.
What, as that evolved?
Well, you know, and, and the hope is, they will put two hundred
As you should, I get it, you're not paying out by the study.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I mean, we're small profit developers, we work to make money. But, um, when you introduce two hundred and forty apartment units to a, a demographic that's decided Livingston, the thought is that you're gonna see the price come down on rentals, right? Well, then it's just a supply and demand issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just, and you wanted to comment, maybe on the design, and
Yeah.
Um, I think I love your intent of making it walkable, reducing traffic. Um, in this design, what I see is very car centric, and your buildings and your little space are in the middle, surrounded by streets and parking, which puts the equivalent forefront of everything that's happening around the development. And, you know, as we're, the opportunity for new development is very rare, it takes years, as we said. And we see this move in where social cohesion, vulnerability, more public spaces, third place places, especially with the opportunity of mixed use development, is centering this human scale development, so where the places, there's a park, which is really great, but it's kind of tucked off by the side. Where in, in Bridgeview, it's a normal business, but I'm sure there's flaws. I really enjoyed walking around it, the streets are smaller, parking's a little bit tucked away, the buildings are facing one another, there's opportunities for connection, seeing each other. And so I'm wondering if there's room to focus on, like, how do we get people interacting with one another, and there's livability and quality of life? Uh, because right now, it's really like, there's streets all around and it's surrounded by parking. Even like covering the parking or tucking them toward the back, but you still have that private closed access, which does very important for people, for kids, and the trees and everything. But thinking about the environment and that.
Yeah. Yeah, we're willing to take a look, you know. Uh, the challenge is, we've got significantly graded property, right, photography, and popping buildings down where you want them to be intellectually doesn't work, you gotta kind of pop them down where the grade says they work, or where you can get them fit relative to the property. Um, so that's been a challenge of this site, for sure. Um, we did come into the city originally with a couple of different configurations, and this configuration was sort of guided to us by what, what we met with the city originally on. Uh, but we're sure willing to go back and take another look and come up with options, and work on a trail plan, and, and work on a traffic plan, then I think our objectives are all the same. Um, the cha- the challenges are, as, as things get spread out like that, um, then costs and infrastructure and stuff, they go up, right? Um, so those are, those are just challenges that we all have to deal with.
I think you have a, um, Erica, did you still, uh, have another question?
I just one, one additional comment, I totally agree, um, with Sarah's comment. Um, and I was just gonna mention, um, you know, the city has just gone through, or is in the process of the zoning code update, and there were a lot of great surveys and, um, community engagement opportunities throughout that process to provide like design recommendations, and so that, that would be a good, um, you know, litmus as far as what the community kind of likes to see in terms of design, um, you know, I know the city really, um, values the sort of historical um, feel, and so if there's a way to, for this development to have a little bit more of that historical um, feel, as opposed to maybe a little bit more modern, um, I think that might ease people, um, you know, just be more aesthetic for folks, um, and then I guess just one additional comment on the roof structures, look like they are, you know, facing all sorts of different directions, and so if potentially, um, you know, when I'm designing a building, I'm thinking about the orientation of the roof and how it could be potentially, um, you know, aligned to have solar and that kind of thing, or if the design of the building has some passive elements to the design to allow for, um, you know, good light and that kind of thing. But those would be comments I would have in terms of the design.
Thank you.
I have a question about the terrain and the covey shed. As you said, you're constrained a lot by the terrain and the water, it's, it's tight, it's hilly. Um, I question, wonder you wouldn't even be able to put two hundred and forty units on this property? As it is, if you were going for non-apartment buildings to begin with? So it's really steep, um, so I get why you're doing apartment buildings, if you want to consolidate, if you're wanting to get affordable, more affordable economical housing, you said? Um, and so as you're going up the hillside, relaxed the height restriction for this area, but it's still gonna have a huge impact on you, on, on everybody who looks across. Um, you're gonna, I mean, the birdhouses that are there, I mean, what is that? The birdhouses, the big
Youtiwa? Would that be hotel?
Yeah.
That's a whole new watch.
Uh, yeah, they're, they're not more than, they're not relaxed, and they're very prominent, and so we're gonna have something even taller on a higher hill slope.
Mm-hmm.
So that's gonna essentially eliminate an impact of you should significantly along the entire development that's going in there, that's fine, this is the reality. But the aesthetic, I really want to place the aesthetic, the way that it looks, how, um, does it have to be an apartment building, like, could it be some, some, does it have to be forty feet, like? A question, I'm sure you have it anyways, and you can, because the reality, um, but can it look nicer, can it be? You know, play to like what, uh, Sarah was saying, a livable space that's enticing for people to be in. Um, and yes, that's gonna make things more, that's obviously, and that's gonna impact things, but maybe it's a balance, maybe some of the units that are lower down in the flatter area are a little taller, and the units that are further back are a little shorter. Like, maybe it could be fifty feet where it's flatter, and I don't know, that's like a little that I can't change, but and the how, the, like, the ones that are up on the hillside are, are the short, to make up for that.
But it's definitely a possibility.
Yeah.
For sure. And, and it will have an impact, there's no doubt, we're not standing here trying to say we're gonna build all these buildings, you know, it's a deal.
You have open space and nothing that is keeping the view, uh, so yes, you're putting something back.
Yeah. You're definitely, you're definitely gonna see it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie about that.
Um, I, um, I, I understand these plans have gone to the police and the fire and all the rest. I have a very hard time picturing what the impact of, you know, at a minimum, two hundred and forty more vehicles are gonna be like um, during school rush hour and work rush hour. Um, the impact on the neighborhood around, I mean, the impact, I live on Sweetgrass, and, and our traffic has impacted the whole strip down to the, the Fifth Street Crossing tremendously. Um, I worry tremendously about egress for everybody north of the tracks before we even add a minimum two hundred and thirty more cars. And then we've got, then we've got Discovery Vista doubling in size. Uh, I can't see any development going until we are guaranteed, until we have in place a minimum of one, if not two crossings. From a safety perspective, you know, wildfire across those grassy hills, which we all love, is a real possibility. And how do we get all these people out?
Yeah, um.
I can, I can say something about that.
Yeah, go for it. I'll talk, but I'll
You're doing a lot of shit, shut up.
So we did think about that, and we did think about travel, and we had a traffic study done, of course, as we're always required to do. But, um, uh, there are a few things maybe that we're not mentioning, we probably should mention now. Number one, the streamlined bus currently stops at Prairie View, you may, you may know that, or maybe you don't know.
Yeah, and it's used very little.
Well, okay, but consider people that are living there in single family homes, it may not, it may not even be, maybe retired people, perhaps like yourself, that are not, don't have regular use. We're also gonna have, talk to Streamline about a bus stop here, because it's more likely that people that are running would love to have an opportunity to take the bus. And the commercial building, commercial part of the development and the twelve thousand square feet, you know, one of the uses can be executive office spaces, where people can come together, not just a coffee shop, but come together and work there. Remote workers, there's a lot of them now, I've got two of them.
Fewer and fewer all the
I've got two, well, not talking about the government. Um, but I, I've got a couple that are kids that are remote workers, and they just work out of the house, they never leave. I think that's gonna impact, and I also think that, um, the, uh, uh, you mentioned, uh, uh, rush hour, people swarming up, it doesn't happen anymore, it doesn't even happen in Bozeman. People are coming out, they have different shifts, they work at the hospital.
Sarah, that's not
That's not true. We live there, we know.
Okay, but so everybody leaves at the same time every morning. Well, may, maybe, certainly there's traffic, I don't doubt that.
No, and my question is really to safety and the railroad and
Okay, well, the railroad's a whole, that's the city, I'll speak.
Well, I'm sorry, but that's, that's also part of this. It may be the city.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment. My name's Garrett Schultz, I'm a tidewars engineer, I'm a civil engineer. Um, wanted to just touch on a couple of things, so the issues you're talking about are certainly important issues. They're, they're broad, they're not really issues that a single developer can be asked to handle himself as far as, uh, citywide traffic. I think in the, in the city of Livingston, it's a known, um, challenge.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, the traffic you have on the north side of the railroad. And maybe Jennifer could speak to this, I know it was brought up to us, and we submitted our traffic report, that there is an upcoming uh, improvement project coming down bike, okay?
At Fifth Street.
Believe so, yeah.
Not, not a new crossing, much less two.
No, just widening it a little bit.
Yeah, we're talking
A little bit, and it's, and point of
A little bit. And it's, in point of fact, this morning I, well, after, when I was on Chinook approaching Fifth. The traffic was backed up all the way around onto Chinook. Fifth was completely stopped. There were cars all the way onto the railroad track to the traffic light. There was no train even. Already the traffic is that intense there with the, with so few. And when you add another two hundred and seventy units, forgive me, but that's insane. And everybody knows it and the city, yes, it's a city issue, but the city cannot necessarily underwrite such a project or subscribe to such a project knowing full well that it's already a mess until you've worked this out. You can't put that in and then say, well, someday we'll fix it. Likewise, anybody here, including myself, who's originally from Southern California. But everyone here who has just watched the news and all the terrible fires are exceedingly sensitive about wildfires. You put another two hundred and seventy units there on the edge of the prairie. I live on Sweetgrass. All it takes is one person, one person with a cigarette or some carelessness. And we're all gone. It's all burned. All of us have been watching it on TV. Entire, the entire town's burned down. And everybody there knows what you guys are posing here is only repeat of the stupidity that they did.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Could you pull up, uh, my infrastructure plans?
Is it on this or something else?
It's in the larger document. It'd be in tab D. And I'll touch on traffic and on, and on the fire stuff. I'm not, I'm not gonna downplay your comments. And those are real, those are real concerns that the city of Livingston residents have expressed and something that I know the city is, is working on collaboratively with.
We all know that, but does the city have the wherewithal to say we cannot develop up there until we have this worked out?
No, that, that's not for me to answer. Can you maybe go to the next page?
Yeah.
If it's not you, who is it?
The one thing I will say about that and, and, and we know, we knew traffic was gonna be an issue with this. Um, you know, again, they, they have the ability to buy right without coming through other than perhaps a subdivision process if they, if they wanted to subdivide. Put in this many dwelling units with this many cars individually. They're, they're focusing at one area. As far as who is it? We can't restrict somebody's use of their property. So the basic use to put in two hundred and forty-eight dwelling units, we, the city cannot restrict that. What we can do, um, is, that's why we send it to the fire chief. That's why we have these discussions and we're asking you, we can put conditions and safeguards in place where the fire hydrants are, where the, I'm sorry, I don't know what it's called, but the hookup that the fire.
Yeah, FTC.
Um, where they use those, any sort of buffering around. One of the things that we said here was if you put the parking lots in the back, that forms a bit of a buffer, right? Between the, the houses that will go over here and this. So, so all of that will be looked at. And that's part of this is, is if welcoming your comments, knowing how important it is and, and trying to make it the safest it can be since we can't just say no.
Well, I'm hearing you saying you can't or you won't.
Legally, I, we can't. The city cannot restrict somebody's use of their property.
The city though has a responsibility to the well-being and the welfare of its public. And if I do something that is detrimental or harmful to my neighbors or something like that, the city suddenly does have, stands in it, says something, it does something. And I think that's all, I think that we all reasonably have those expectations from the city. Now, it takes maybe some strength of character or some will which you may not have, or maybe you do, I don't know, but I would suggest that will should carry the day.
So I'd like to keep it project specific. If you go to the next page, yeah, uh, one, one more up. Sorry, no, you went too far. One higher. There you go, right there. So, uh, some of the benefits, some of the safety benefits that this project is providing is another access for those residents. So if there, if there is a blockage on Wildry Drive, um, for whatever reason, which is that road to the west, right? Those residents can duck through this way and come out this new PUD road system. Uh, that's a benefit. Another benefit is this water main extension that runs all the way uphill. We've got water or we have fire hydrants spaced out at city spacing, believe off top my head is five hundred feet. We also met with the fire chief and they requested two additional hydrants. So we put two additional hydrants out there. So now you've got more access to, um, water to treat fires. Uh, we, we had a traffic engineer come up with a, an in-depth traffic study. Identified that every intersection out there was gonna be level of C or less, with the exception of Fifth Street and Front Street. Fifth and front, um, which has plans by the city to address that. So, you know, the concerns you're mentioning, those are valid concerns for sure. I think within our project in itself, it adds some safeguards for access or the ability to tap fires. Um, for those things and the larger picture, I mean, it's a community effort.
What are the plans to adjust the, drop the level of service? Did it open a C to B on the front and?
Correct.
Fifth Street, you said?
Yep.
What are the plans there? You said the city has plans.
Yeah, I, that's a little bit outside of what I can.
Yeah, and we, I can tell you about those. It's separate. It's, it's not. It will be impacted more or the other by this project for people that cross there. But I do know that, um, Public Works has been working with not just MDT because Front Street and Park are their roads, but also the railroads to improve the Fifth Street Crossing. Front Street, um, don't know what the plans are right now, but I do know that it is on everybody's radar once the wellness center opens to try to make that connection between the crossover at Fifth and to the wellness center. Um, something that's safer for people, not just in cars, but also looking at the, the, the non-vehicular connections. So that is definitely on our radar. There's just, as far as I know, there's no design yet for that.
One other thing to mention on the fire is all, these buildings will all be sprinkled as well.
Individually sprinkled?
Each building.
Yeah.
Inside each unit, are you saying?
Yeah, inside buildings, inside each unit.
So in the units in the hallway, I think, right? Not, I don't.
Units, hallways, everything. Except for unoccupied space, like crawl space or something like that would not, that one. All, all the way down to eighty, eighty square feet or under or over requires fire suppression.
Is there anyone online that had a, a question or comment right now?
For the entire.
Three hundred and forty-two. Yep, the requirements are one per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
One, and not one point five.
No, it's one and the extra spaces I think are to serve the.
Commercial. Yeah, and we went though, we went to one point five. But we did one and then we meant the commercial parking space as well.
What, what are your estimates on how many people will be living in those two hundred and forty units?
I'll say first, from an infrastructure perspective, we use the city standard of two and a half, but that's, that's high. Um, that's how we planned it for sewer capacity and, and ability to serve for water. Uh, you're, you're probably a lot closer to two. And there's a hundred and four studio.
Studios, right.
Sixty-eight one bedrooms and sixty-eight two bedrooms. So two is maybe even on the high side, to be honest, but we planned everything, including the traffic study at, at, uh, two and a half.
Uh, one other question, and that's the, uh, commercial space. Are you gonna put any limits on who can go in there? I mean, I, I'm not real interested in a liquor store or pot shop. Um, you know, I mean, those kinds of things. Uh, that would also be detrimental to your, um, development, I would believe. But, um, is there any plan that, to limit what could go in there?
We have no, we have no preconceived ideas of what you can do in there. We suspect a coffee shop, if you will, we see that in the north side. I do think, as I mentioned earlier, that perhaps, perhaps a shared office space. Like that some places have, I know Bozeman has, I think, free, where people come together and work in the same space. I think that's a possibility.
I don't wanna see a liquor store or pot shop up there either. Um, and since I'm one of the developers, maybe I can influence that.
I, I wasn't looking for that either. Don't put that on me. But it, it might be something that we could put in and, you know, literally restrict what's.
Daycare would be great.
Yeah, isn't there restrictions on?
I think there's some work, uh, relative to distance to.
They can't, industrial uses.
Right.
So much, but, um, since R two is pretty restrictive and we are encouraging the commercial. Um, it's, you, and again, bear with me because this is the first PUD that we have brought through. Um, but our intent, the way that we set this up was we know that you're not gonna be able to tell us that this particular business is coming in. This isn't. What I think would be more helpful is hearing what people don't want or what they want and have that be the intent. If, if it's general office space or coworking space, roughly how much of a square footage you're talking about? If you definitely do not want a certain type of business in there, I think that you can put that in that and that could be included with your development agreement because you've opposed it. Um, but this does open up a little bit as far as right now, the R two, the current zoning of this is really primarily residential. So, um, and, and I, I need to look. I don't even think you can have a coffee shop. I, I know I should know this, but in, in, in R two. And so we're looking, what we're trying to encourage is neighborhood commercial, the type of commercial um, or even office space, if you wanna think of commercial that way, because it is, um, that will serve not just this community. But hopefully some of the people around here. And part of the reason for that is keeping, helping to reduce the vehicular trips. Your concern is a huge concern. Everybody knows it, the traffic going across. So if there is a way and the city's adopted growth policy identifies this as a need for integrating and creating more neighborhood scale commercial. Not, we're not talking about a Murdochs. We're not talking about something like even an Albertsons necessarily. Nothing wrong with those businesses. But they likely would not be considered by you all and the developer or the city appropriate for this site. Um, certainly not with the current crossing situation and they don't, they don't necessarily reduce traffic. Um, now, again, throwing this out there, if you had a small format grocery store, which are really tough to come by because I know they're really hard to make money, but if you have something like that, that might actually appeal to the people that live there. I, if I lived in one of these, I'd just walk down there. I'd ride my bike. I'd park right there. They're required to have bike parking. We are, I, I can't remember the number you're proposing, but we're certainly encouraging them to have more than the minimum required, which is one for every ten vehicular spaces to encourage people to not take their cars to get anywhere. Um, there's no, there's no sure fix that, that I know of that we can do right now. So what we're focusing on with this is incentivizing and encouraging and trying to guide it. Um, if I could wave a magic wand and, and, and come up with the money for the funding to go across the tracks, I would. I do know that our city manager and the commission is, um, actively looking at ways to fund and where to put a crossing. It's just not there yet.
I should add too, that, uh, we're not, under the PUD, we're not required to put in commercial at all. We can just fill all apartments. We thought that would be, it was our suggestion to do that. We thought that would be a good, uh, use of, of the property. To have, uh, ready access for people for certain functions that are neighborhood friendly to answer the liquor store question.
I would like to state that I like that for the record. I know there's no record, but I just like it. So, uh, in support of that decision, I like that. Um, and I was curious, because you're talking about public archives, is the open space gonna be part of the public? Uh, or is that for like the residents and what about?
No, it's all.
And is the park public as well?
It's all public, yeah.
Dedicated to public.
Everything's public. The trails, when, when they go in, those are public. People could come from anywhere, let's just use the trails.
Any other questions or comments or anything else you wanna say? I mean, this really is sort of an open. Um.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to go back to what I first said when we opened the discussion and said, housing, uh, fires are an issue. I know that they were happening nationwide. I was in Los Angeles when those fires started. So I saw it up close and personal and it's frightening. I know there's no question about it. But there is a housing issue. There's a huge housing issue in Livingston. And this is a way for us to provide workplace, I'll call it workplace housing for a lot of people in Livingston without building warehouses and more single family homes. And we, we wanna do it in the right way. We will, Garrett explained some of the fire preventive measures we're taking. We're doing the best we can under the circumstances and you're all part of that with your feedback today too.
Well, just one thing, we've had two prairie fires here in the last four months.
I had one of my huts in Bozeman, yeah.
And, uh, so it's top of the mind.
Yeah, that's no question.
Um, yeah. You know, some, some ideas, my son lives on the, uh, uh, the, the Mesa, you know, where the fire burned up. And, uh, yeah, by the bowling alley.
Above and a little east of the bowling alley.
And, uh, what stopped it on his property was a dirt road that goes behind his fence. He, he's got two huts to the second line. And, you know, for a prairie fire, uh, I mean, that's pretty inexpensive to, uh, to mow, um, you know, ten feet out or something.
We do mow, we do mow now, but you know, if you're a resident there, we mow the common areas when we take care of the snow. So that would carry, this is separate.
Yeah.
This is not part of the HOA, but we would certainly, uh, take on that responsibility here as well. And we will have onsite management for sure. A percent.
A quick question on aesthetics, is, is this gonna be landscaped? So what do you guys envision for whether it's gonna look like outside?
Yeah, it, it would be landscaped like a standard residential project, right? You know, sidewalks, trees, parking lots.
So are you guys, what kind of vegetation are you gonna put out there? It's gonna be like lots of breathing lawns that are gonna be watered or, um,
Native vegetation?
Grass that's there. I mean, it's gonna get impacted by the construction, so it's gonna have to be changed a little bit, but.
You know, my gut would say it, we're, we're gonna do some sort of multi-species. We're gonna cluster all the plantings. We're gonna try to make it look native. But this area is kinda historically no trees, right? So we're really introducing that landscaping to sort of scale the building and, and scale the area. But yeah, these would be, uh, and as each phase is developed, then we would complete more landscaping and then move to the next phase and complete more landscaping. And there's a lot of parking lot, you know, which also is a preventant for spreading a fire too. It's a lot of cement, asphalt.
And, and there'll be no short-term rentals of these apartments?
No, we're not gonna launch short-term rentals.
That is something that you would put in your.
Yeah.
But, but right now, we, we, under the current code, and again, we're looking at that, we cannot restrict that. We don't have any restrictions or requirements for short-term rentals. But if you put that in your plan and that is what is approved, then the onus is on you and we will check that. You will make that happen and restrict that. Right?
Yes, but, but if you do that too, you know, there's double edged sword to everything. Yes, but but if you do that too, you know, there's double-edged sword to everything, right? So you get a tenant that's living there and they get a six-month assignment. What do they do? They could sublease, they could B R B O, they no, they can't, right?
No, they can't.
Well, the typical way that's handled that I've seen is uh we don't intend to be R B O, that's the bottom line. But the typical uh restriction that allows a mandatory thirty-day occupancy.
Thirty days are considered uh short. Anything over thirty days, so like six months.
That's that's law, thirty thirty days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just I've just and I only brought that up to say that we legally cannot currently under our current code, which we are, we are in the process of updating, but right now, we do not have the ability legally to restrict short-term rentals anywhere in the city of Livingston. We're looking at it as part of the code update. Stay tuned.
And we we just don't, we don't have the wherewithal, the labor, the time, the, you know.
Yeah.
It's 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 very difficult.
It's like running a hotel. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Anything else? Anyone online?
Oh, yeah, can I, so I just, um, yeah, thanks. Um why rent all the units and what what are the decisions to rent instead of?
Instead of selling them? Um that's a good question. I mean, we we could condo them out and sell them um. And I think that would still be allowed under the P U D. You know, it's just a matter of how the units are constructed. It becomes a construction issue at that point. And then it becomes a legal issue in defining what the condominium is, right? And what's public space and what's your space? Um yeah, I I don't know. I I think the rent, I think having a rental management on a property that is two hundred and forty units is a really good idea, because then you don't get two hundred and forty different answers to the same question, right? Um what's unique about HOAs is, I mean, you could count the fifty lots that we've done and you could go talk to fifty owners and you get fifty different opinions, right? Um and so I think for us, we'd like to keep that control. We'd like to keep it landscaped, cleaned, you know, garbage taken care of, all those fundamental requirements. It's just easier for us to do if if we're leasing.
I think um it's just interesting in being able to accumulate wealth as a younger person, you know, you know, houses and assets and
Yeah.
just having access to.
You know, the argument is is that that might not be the case anymore, right? Um and but I don't know. Well, it'll be interesting to see. I'm I'm kind of a believer that 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 trend got kicked out by the baby boomers, you know? Um they got all this real estate value increase and and then the rest of us are are just going to see incremental increases. That's what my gut tells me. I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball. Um but I really do think that the old adage of, you know, buy a house and and live in the house for twenty years and the value is going to go up and you're going to retire and you're going to get get that back. I don't think that model is going to work in the future. We've gone so far with the increased value on these properties. It's just like, how is that correct?
Right, and then the big part, big portion of our population, own the own those assets, are there going to be a lot of stranded assets or subdivisions, but people don't want to live, and that's fairly not this one, but.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, it's it's a it's a problem I mentioned at the start, too. We can't. We have three phases ready to go. We've been sitting on it for three years now. The builders aren't ready to build because they don't believe they can sell them at the current price. We'll see. We got to do it at some point. But I'll I'll give comments and questions and stuff that we can, you know, think about as we work through the design on this and and we will.
I've been really appreciative of this process, um city developers, if not the media, to come into a community and be open to whatever comes. So we welcome this. We like this.
Well, thank you for having us and and we understand too that it's it's not perfect, right? Um there's community desires or city desires, there's developer desires, there are all these. Uh and then we're working on land and we're in a spot where we've got road and traffic and fire and all these things to consider. It's super challenging, right? And we want to do the best we can to respond to the community. Um but there's limits. And and so at some point in time, we have to go like, okay, well, that that's all we can do because a af- after that point, it doesn't make sense. But we don't know where that point is, to be the honest with you. So we're kind of we're we're trying to see what the community wants. So as we go back, we can understand well, what would these have to rent for and 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 how much do we have to invest and what does the community want to see and you know, trails and street lights and all that stuff is great, but it adds on to the cost of your lot. The first lots that we developed, it was thirty-seven hundred dollars per lot to put the streetlights in for the development. Well, every dollar that somebody paid for a lot, thirty-seven hundred of them went to the streetlights that you see as you drive through your neighborhood. To me, that's like crazy, right? When I think about it intellectually, I'm like, wow. But I also see the streetlights and I go, wow, it's nice to have light and the development and safety for people. And so those are the those are the times where I really just I struggle with it, right? Like the outlay of capital versus the benefit of it.
Sure.
And and how do we deal with that? It's it's a good question. It's a good topic.
If you put trails next to your development, those will become more desirable places to live. You could probably charge more and get a return on your investment.
Yeah. Well, we never say we're going to charge more. We get a better return because people hate that. We're going to try, we're going to try to make the most cost effective um that we can, because we really do want to hit the workforce housing. And we really believe it's coming. Um we're working on projects outside of Livingston that are going to impact Livingston, right? There's people that will be on those projects that are coming to Livingston. And they will be looking for housing and they will be driving the streets and and we're sort of trying to get ahead of that.
While also providing more housing for the residents of Livingston.
Great.
Thanks, everybody, for for coming and and um thanks for your patience. Kind of this is, like I said, the first one of these. Um and um I hope that you thought it was useful and I hope that you took notes because I did. Um and I have, um if anybody needs, I'd like, I I just want to reiterate, I I can't take any of the discussion here because this isn't a public hearing and bring that forward with staff reports or anything that goes to public hearing. But I'm more than happy if you would like to call or email or drop a letter by. I have cards with my email outside of this. If you get that information to me, it will be included in the information that goes before the land use board in April and the city commission to inform their analysis and and what they decide. So thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
You're taking such a beautiful Wednesday.